Good evening. Just now, we started with a special meeting tour of Sorrel Place, and we look forward to opening of this very needed housing in Arcata soon. And it was very beautiful, so congratulations to everyone involved in that project. So as part of that special meeting, I wanted to take a minute to see if we had any public comment about the tour. So this area of public comment will be regarding that tour at Sorrel Place. And it was open to the public, so we did have several people attend. Do you see anybody for public comment for this? There is no public comment on this item.
I just had a quick comment about the special meeting. You know, it seemed kind of confusing when you look at the start of the agenda, and it says Wednesday at 6:00 p.m., and then later on in the agenda, it says 5:00 p.m. And a person there told me they thought it was confusing determining when the meeting started and where it was. And then it was also my understanding that the public had requested to the city that there be an email blast announcing the meeting, but the city decided not to do an email blast because they don't want too many members of the public attending. So, you know, we just had a big conversation about how we want more public engagement, and we want to reach out to the public more. So I just hope it's something we can continue to work on.
Do any other members of council have any comments? All right, so this will take us into our regular 6 o'clock meeting. So good evening, and thank you for viewing the February 2nd meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the COVID-19 virus. New cases continue to be reported in Humboldt County. The city urges residents to get vaccinated and boosted as our best defense against the virus and the personal and economic impacts it has on our town. So this evening, we started with a special meeting of Sorrel Place, and we look forward to the opening of this very needed housing in Arcata soon. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Goldstein?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. So if you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged on to the Zoom meeting webinar, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item on Wish You Which to Speak. City staff will unmute you, and you will have two minutes to comment. You can also access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is time for public comment, city staff will request you to unmute, and you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted, and you will have two minutes to comment. So this takes us into early oral communications, and this 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any requests that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press *9 if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. All right, we do have some public comment. Our first one is going to be Greg, and then after that, we have Patricia. Please go ahead, Greg.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I wanted to let you know that walking 11th Street Monday, I had to cross because a guy was spraying herbicides on the new huge swath of pavement at Arcata's lovely new data center. Then he sprayed the sidewalks. Dodging poisons, I crossed the street and got a macro gander at that grotesque installation with the lethal Mad Max fence and the NSA-style cameras, which brings me to ask this council, why should I trust a development department that would approve such a Kafkaesque new centerpiece for our town to develop Arcata's so-called gateway area? Seven- and eight-story Isla Vista-style buildings on soon-to-liquify soils, and everyone comes with a car to then just try to dodge herbicides on 11th? While I was deep in thought, a small man in a huge truck raced west on 11th and must have hit 50 miles an hour before reaching P Street. Happens all the time. Just yesterday, on the south stretch of James Road, a young woman flew past the church and both schools, going at least double the speed limit by the time she braked hard at 11th. Happens all the time. Remember Alan Gradwall? Run down and killed by a drunk college student at a four-way stop in broad daylight. 14th and G. After Alan's death, the city did nothing to change that intersection, not even those little red flags on top of the stop signs, as if his death meant nothing at all. Alan Gradwall's killer is your lowest-common-denominator driver. Hell, two of your recent mayors are lowest-common-denominator drivers. This is who you must design your streets for: the drunk, addled, distracted, angry, imperious, self-absorbed driver piloting lethal steel inches from our loved ones. Even Meredith Matthews' parked car isn't safe. Throughout the city, I want speed humps, meanders, crossing stoplights, dead-end streets, 15 miles an hour in neighborhoods, and how about traffic enforcement? I've never seen it. Ultimately, we must take pavement away from cars and give it to the people. Take pavement away from cars and give it to the people. Before I'll support any new housing in this city, I want solid, meaningful, on-the-ground changes to the car paradigm.
Thank you, Greg. That was your two minutes.
That becomes unlimited. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Patricia, and after that, we will have Jim. Go ahead, Patricia.
Um, yes. I don't even know where to start on some of these when I phone in. There's so much in this plan that is so vague, and I know the city's moving forwards really quickly and pushing this. And a lot of the public is just kind of wondering if we actually do have a say in this. Talking with people and gathering people and trying to encourage them to influence the plan, it overwhelmingly comes up, like, are they even listening to us? I don't even think they're listening to us. I think the narrative's there, and they're just sticking to it. And I think it's a huge problem. I think we really, really have to get this right if we are going to be building a project of this scale, of this many houses for infill. I'm part of a group that really is excited to see infill. We know, you know, we understand the need for housing, but it just seems like so much of this is just not wisely planned out. And it's very, very concerning for those of us who just really wish the best for our city and want to see it grow, like, just, we want to see it grow with integrity. And I don't, I think that integrity of this plan is missing. So I don't, I don't even know how we get to a point where, that, where the people actually really, really are listened to and that we bring it down to a scale that is manageable and we put, you know, forth some really solid plan and some really well-built infrastructure first.
Patricia, thank you so much for your comment, but that's the two minutes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, hello, councilor staff. I wanted to voice my ongoing concern over building heights, not exceed four stories, and the need to establish clear and concise standards to address solar, sorry about that, solar shadowing within the gateway plan. Will there be a form of GA ordinance to address this? Keep it in mind, the city's target of housing, 3,500 housing units in the Gateway District in addition to future developments. Solar shadowing of existing structures is imminent. We have one example already with the solar, Sorrel Place. With the example of Sorrel Place, 44 units, we can face 79 more of these structures in the same stature with only 14 parking spaces. With the same formula, 3,500 housing units would have 1,100 spaces. I request the city to plan to address for this lack of parking. If it is to make more expensive parking in the private, in private parking garages, please give the details. And that is all for tonight, and thank you for my time to speak.
Thank you, Jim. Checking for any more public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no more public comment, mayor. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I agree with all the public comment, and I thank those members of the public for taking the time to call in. Thanks.
Okay, so moving on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have Item A, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of December 15, 2021; B, approve the minutes of the City Council meeting of January 19, 2022; C, the biweekly report on general warrants; D, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic; and E, ratify employment agreement with Nitra B. Cotry for City Engineer for the term of February 3, 2022, through February 2, 2027. Is there any council member that would like to remove an item?
I'd like to remove Item E, please.
Okay, so we've got Item E requested by Councilmember Watson.
I think I'd like to remove Item D, but I don't know if this is the right place to do it. But I'd like to talk about it.
It absolutely is the right place.
Sure, thanks.
We've got three left. Anybody like to remove one? Okay, how about any members of the public or staff? Not seeing any members of the public or staff. Okay, so then can I get a motion on the consent items for Items A through C?
I move that we approve Items A through C on the consent calendar.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Schaefer and a second by Councilmember Matthews. All in favor? Aye. Aye?
Aye.
So is it okay if we just, I know Brett, you, Councilmember Watson, you requested yours off first. Can we just go D and E in order?
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's go ahead and start with Item D.
Sure, I just wanted to revisit this conversation. I know that the Board of Supervisors is going back into public meetings in March, and I would like to kind of float that, the first March meeting, dependent on, of course, the trajectory of the pandemic, that we consider that as a timeline for us to go back in person as well. I don't know if this is the appropriate place.
That is.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I agree as well.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely agree that the hybrid option is preferable, so if we can, if we can make that happen, it's ideal. Yeah.
Yeah, obviously, depending on cases and what, you know, the CDC recommends, but I definitely think that that would be a good marker.
Works for me.
But we still do have to approve this, right? Because I think that means, we can still do hybrid meetings and everything else like that, but yeah.
Yeah, can we do as amended? Amend it and approve it?
Well, do you want to amend it, or is it just a suggestion that we discuss it?
I think it's more of a suggestion that we discuss it, so I can move to approve D to declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic with more discussion to come.
Sure. I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Matthews and a second by Vice Mayor Goldstein. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to Item E. Go ahead, Councilmember Watson.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a special thank you to Nitra for his years of dedicated service to the city. I've always enjoyed working with Nitra. He's honest, trustworthy, and hardworking, and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you very much, Nitra.
Here, here. True.
Absolutely. Would you like to make a motion on that one, Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, I move that we approve Item E. Ratify employment agreement with Nitra B. Cotry for City Engineer for the term of February 3, 2022, through February 2, 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to our old business, which we do not have any for tonight. And so that, why, I think my, I'm a little out of order here. We have another?
We have no business.
Okay. So I guess we have an, we do have an, it's just a quick agenda. I'm not used to that. So once again, we are back to oral and written communications, and this again is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press *9 if you are on a phone line and you would like to make public comment. And this time, speakers are limited to three minutes. So when it's your time for public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. Do we have any more public comment? We do have public comment. We have Joanne. Go ahead, Joanne.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yay. This is only my second time Zooming with you folks on a City Council meeting, but thank you. I enjoyed walking through the new Sorrel's Place building with you all. I thank Meredith Matthews very much for trying to get us to meet in person because that is the only way to fly, as far as I'm concerned. So thank you, Meredith Matthews, for suggesting a March hybrid start date, if everybody can do that. And in terms of declaring emergencies, I just want to remind you once again that on September, in September 18, I think it was, of 2019, at Sofia Pereira's motion, the City Council of Arcata declared a climate emergency. And that was three, two and a half years ago. And I'm hoping that we can get to a point where we recognize the urgency of the climate reality and the climate crisis and make an actual formal declaration acknowledging the emergency and acting as such in an urgent manner when it comes to fossil fuel reductions and zero-waste efforts and all the things that really need to happen in a collective sense in our community to make us a standout leader moving forward into the future in a climate-changing world. So thank you for letting me speak on this constantly because it's a constant issue for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, checking for any other public comment. Seeing none. Okay, so that takes us to the next item, which is to receive the Arcata and Mad River Transit Quarterly Report from Nitra Cotry, our City Engineer. So could we please have that staff report, Nitra?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers, and staff members, and members of the public. First of all, I'd like to thank you for approving my contract for the city. It's an honor to work for the city. And to start, I enjoy working with everybody in the city. I'm very blessed and fortunate to be working in the city of Arcata, and all the staffs are great to work with, so thank you for that. So here, I am here to give you a quick update on our transit system. And this is our quarterly report. The reason I'm doing this because as a part of our audio report in 2021, we were required to provide update to the council, member of the public, on a regular basis. So we decided to do this quarterly. So I did similar report late last year. Now I'm doing it, and also so that you know that there is a standing item at our Transportation Safety Committee where we talk about transit, but there's not a lot of audience there. So hence, this is a good venue to just give a quick update on the project or on our transit system. So I will just go over maybe some ridership, our routes, what are transit services we provide, and then maybe if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer the questions. So starting with ridership, definitely, as you know, with COVID, our ridership numbers are definitely down. Compared to 18, 19, we used to have approximately 332,000 riders in a given year. In 19, 20-year, due to partial COVID in 2020, the ridership went down to 240,000 people. And in the year 2021, now the ridership is down to 54,000. You know, it's a reduction of almost 80% plus in the ridership. Our key riders are HSA students, and as you know, the students are not in face-to-face class, so hence, the ridership number is down, and people are not using the transit. We are hoping with this now face-to-face class at HSA, we have seen some numbers going up, so we are hoping that number, ridership number, will go up in the near future. Regarding the routes, as you know, we have three routes in the city. We call it the red route, gold route, and orange route. Red route and a gold route are our weekday routes, which runs from morning 7 to 7:00 normally, but because of the COVID, we are not running the regular routes. And there's the orange route, which is a hybrid of red and gold, which runs only on Saturdays. But because of the COVID and lower ridership, not people, not many people using it, we are using orange route currently as our regular route. However, working with HSA looks like there are more students coming, and they are using the classrooms. So we, starting next week, we will be trying to do red and gold route in the morning from 7:00 to noon to see how people are using it. And then the rest of the day, from noon to 7:00, we will be doing orange route. Also, at our transit, we do provide service for Greyhound and Amtrak. We do get commission from Greyhound, but from Amtrak, we don't get any commission. Greyhound has reduced their bus because of less usage. On a given week, there's only one bus that comes every day, except for Wednesdays and Thursdays. So there's not a lot of Greyhound bus in the transit system. And for Amtrak, we have every day two buses, one in the morning at 7:05 a.m. and another one at 10:05 a.m., which comes at the transit. And we have seen in the last few months a little bit increase on people using the Greyhound as well as Amtrak buses. And regarding other programs, you know, we have, in the last three years, we have provided free bus services in the month of June and July, which was through a grant program, LC TOP, and it stands for Low Carbon Transit Operation Program. And we were successful to get some funding again this year, so we will be running the Free Ride Program in the month of June and July this year. Now, beyond that, as you know, the last item is about electric bus. As a part of our last year's budget, we approved to purchase a few electric buses, which will be hopefully arriving in early 2023. So once that buses are here, we are trying to put a new line in the city of Arcata, which will have a lesser stop and more frequency of bus in downtown and HSA connection. And we will be calling that a green line at this, and that's what we are planning. So we will provide you more update on that as we move forward in coming months. And in my next update, I will have more information on that green line and electric buses. So with that, that was a quick, short update on our transit system. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Hey, thank you so much for that, Nitra. I am really excited about the electric buses. I know a few people that I work with actually take the buses to where I work in Eureka, and I am hoping that I will be able to put my money where my mouth is and start taking buses to work as well. So can you talk a little bit? Because I don't really, shame on me, I'm really unfamiliar with the routes, but how frequently do the buses go from Arcata to Eureka?
Our city buses, our AMRTs, they just run in the city, the city of Arcata. And we do have a connection points in Valley West area and at the transit where we connect with HTA bus system, where people could connect. So for example, if somebody is coming from Q Street, they can take our Arcata metro system and come to transit, and from transit, they can take a HTA bus, which will take them to Eureka or Intri Dad.
Thank you so much.
Do we have any other questions or comments for Nitra? All right, thank you for that report, Nitra. So next, as many of you know, we were discussing a residential rental inspection program, and the last time it came before council, the thing that we agreed on was to establish a working group of people to get a little more community input before we went further down that road. And so we have Nitra again here to give us an update on how that working group is going.
Yes, thank you again, mayor and vice mayor and councilmembers. Yes, I'm here to give you just a brief update, and you are correct, we brought this item in late October, and we received some feedback and comments, and one of the direction we got was to form a working group. So after that, we sent out an invitation to all the member of public in Arcata, and we received 19 applications. There was quite a bit of good interest on the program, and they wanted to help. So we got 19 applications, and out of 19 applications through our internal committee and through some processing. And if you want to know more on that processing, how we selected, I can give more information. But out of those 19 people, we selected nine. It is a very nice, diverse group, which will be working with us to implement and prepare our residential rental inspection program. So right now, we have, the group is formed. We haven't met as a group. Our schedule is to meet, our first meeting will be in February, and there'll be two meetings in March to come up and work on the program and updating ordinance, you know, and depending on the feedback we get from the working group. And then the next meeting will be in April, which will be a public meeting where the working group and the member of public can provide comments on the prepared draft program. And once we have that, we will bring that, we'll incorporate the comments and bring that item to the council for consideration in May. Our goal is to bring it in May and try to get introduced and approved in the month of June, so we can start implementing the program in July. Now, it's basically a 2023. That's our goal, and that's what we are looking forward for. And also, as a part of the program, just maybe a quick update, you know, you, as a council, approved a staff person, permit technician, who will be hired, and that person will be joining us early March. And that person will be helping us to prepare and implement the program as well, to give it a kickstart in the programming phase and then in the implementation phase. So we're excited and looking forward for that also.
Do we have any questions for Nitra regarding that?
Yeah, just a quick question. I don't know how specific you can be, Nitra, but thank you for laying out that really clear timeline as well. I really appreciate that. You said it is a diverse group, so I mean, could you give us just a general overview of the makeup of that group? I mean, tenants, landlords, builders, I mean, a little bit. What are we looking at?
So yes, that's a pretty good question. I would say, you know, among the 19 people we got, we were not sure, like, as a one person, I should be selecting or our team should be selecting. So what we did is, we create some criteria, and we selected some city directors to be in the committee, and we asked them to pick, we removed the name and just gave them their interest, where they work. And our criteria was to have a diverse group, which includes tenants, landlords, and some organization group, a nonprofit or profit. That should be the three main categories that they should be considering. So we wanted to have like a, there are nine people. We wanted to make sure like a 30, 30, 30, or like, at least, we have each of that individual in that 30-person group. So that was our goal, and that, with that in mind, we have a diverse group. And I believe we have a good diverse group, which consists of tenants, landlords, and a nonprofit group, which can help us prepare the program.
Awesome. That sounds like a great system serve for selection, and thank you so much. That sounds great.
Thank you.
I just had a question regarding the timing. You know, I appreciate that you have it timed out and hoping for that public meeting in April, but I just wanted to weigh in on that from me. I think that this is, this is a pretty hefty ordinance that we're trying to put forth, and I just wanted to encourage, if it does take a bit longer, if you're having robust discussions within that working group, from another council member, feel free to weigh in on this as well. But I feel like it's, you know, if it ends up taking a little bit longer because we need to continue those discussions, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, with the mayor as well on that. And I think, you know, we've been having these discussions surrounding, you know, more public input, and I think this is a really good example of an ordinance that kind of came forth, and a lot of people felt like they hadn't, you know, had the adequate time to digest it and learn about it. And we've created this working group to digest it and figure out what's going on. And we've created this working group to digest it and figure out what's going on and what's best for the community. So I think, you know, if it does take longer, that's at the will of that working group to really make sure they're getting down to what the community needs. So I appreciate the work of this group. And yeah, I mean, we can be patient. I think updates are always great. And thank you for bringing us, to us tonight. So thanks.
Yes, I think that's a very good point. And we can give you regular updates, not maybe at every single council meeting. But once we meet with the group, at least after one or two meetings, we will know where we stand, where the group is going. So we can give you an update on that. I would say maybe late April or maybe mid-March, maybe that would be good. Put time up for, or at least two meetings with the working group, you'll be able to give you some feedback.
Anyone else for Natra? Okay, so do we have any other staff updates?
Mayor and Vice Mayor and council, good evening. No big updates. I just wanted to say I'm at the Leaky California City City Manager Conference, and I look forward tomorrow to sharing statewide with about 400 city managers about some of the great work that we're doing up in Arcata. So, and I will see you then back in person at the next meeting.
And that was our city manager weighing in there. For those of you that might not know, she's out of town at a conference and actually presenting. So congratulations. Okay, so that takes us to council member updates. So yeah, anybody, go ahead. I'm Councilmember Matthews.
Jumping on, I just wanted to say something. Mr. King, thank you for bringing up the point that you made during a public comment. As some of you know, my car was struck while it was parked by a distracted driver. I feel in the last couple of weeks, there has been some really terrible incidences of distracted driving, one even resulted in the loss of a very bright light in our community. I feel like we had talked recently about, you know, being aware and slowing down and watching the road. So I just want to, again, publicly plead with everybody to please slow down, watch where you're going, don't drive distracted, and just be safe. Thank you.
Yeah. I have something I'd like to share with the public. I probably waited too long to mention it, so I apologize for that. I want to thank the public for being so kind and compassionate and supportive of me during everything that's been going on. The public support really keeps me going, and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you so much. And, you know, there are a few issues I have concerns about, but I've informed the mayor, and I'll continue to work with city policies and procedures to resolve them. Thank you.
I have a quick update just from one of my boards that I sit on, from the Rowood Coast Energy Authority. Just a couple of exciting things. RCA recently has put out their kind of quarterly report. So if you check out their website, there's a lot of updates on the awesome things RCA has been doing in our community. Especially too, the council recently, or the city manager, signed a letter in support of the Rowood Regional Rural Energy Networks going on. And RCA has been, you know, kind of entrusted and seen as a leader in this community to be able to lead projects like this and kind of build up these projects and use federal funds to work on energy resiliency in our community, not only in Humboldt County, but working with Mendocino County, Lake County, and other nearby counties to, you know, build up this network for energy resilience. And on that same vein, too, the microgrid at the airport is up and operational, which is super exciting and is churning out solar energy. And, you know, events of blackouts or anything like that, we'll be able to kind of run those essential services up at the airport and the Coast Guard station. So awesome things. And if you're interested more in that, RCA's website has their kind of quarterly update and all of that info. So thank you.
Redwoodenergy.org.
And I just wanted to speak a little bit about the Arcata Main Street Organization. That's one of my council assignments. And we, Main Street really needs some active board members and volunteers to support it. There is a small and mighty group of people that are currently holding it down. They've got really great plans and ideas to move forward, but we definitely need new membership to make that happen. And a vital Main Street is really an important part of a vital downtown. And there's a lot that can be done through that organization. So I just, if you, there's lots of opportunities to join, whether you're a business owner or a property owner. There's a lot of ways to go about it. So if you're interested, please do look into Arcata Main Street.
Okay, I have, I have something I want to say, too. This is really hard. All right, I'm gonna try not to get too emotional. As some of my fellow council members know, and some of the city staff, I've made a very difficult decision. I'm stepping down from city council. I love this town and this community. Recently, there have been some health issues in my family, which has made me wonder if I need to leave the council to focus on the health of my family. Unfortunately, it's become clear that the healthcare in Humboldt County does not come close to meeting the needs of its residents. The energy and time that I have dedicated to you all now needs to go towards ensuring that I have the best medical care possible for my family. Sorry. I ran for this office because I value people above all else. Each person deserves a good life, and I need to be able to provide that for my own family. I believe I can serve out the rest of the month of February, but I wanted to bring this forward tonight because it seems to provide the council with more options to fill my vacancy than if I was to wait till later in the month to announce. And I just want to leave the council and you all in Arcata with the best situation possible that I can. I will say my silver lining for all of this is knowing how strongly I believe in Mayor Atkins Alizar, Councilmember Schaefer, and Councilmember Matthews. These three elected officials are some of the strongest and most capable people I have ever met. Please know how tirelessly they work for you all and that they always truly have your best interests of heart, at heart. So thank you so much for the privilege of getting to serve on the Arcata City Council. I'm so deeply appreciative for the last, my last year in this position. Please remember to love your neighbor's house or not and embrace each other with compassion and empathy. Thank you all so much.
And it looks like we don't have to say goodbye this evening because we still have the Vice Mayor with us for the rest of the month. So we appreciate that. We also appreciate your struggle and your dedication. So thank you. So that will be a discussion that we will be having publicly on how to go about filling this vacancy. So there may be a special meeting called, or we will be discussing at the next meeting. So please stay tuned for that. But it is a discussion that we'll be having. Also, for dates of future meetings, we have secured the council goal-setting sessions from March 1 and March 8 that will be starting at 5:30. So we will just be talking about our goals, but it is, as always, an open public forum. And, and then we will have our regular February meeting. So with that, unless there's any final comments from the council?
I know that was a really tough decision for you to make, Emily, and I absolutely know that was not something that you made lightly. So my heart goes out to you and your family.
Yeah, and I just want to say, I mean, running this election with you was really special because I felt like we identified with a lot of the same values and a lot of the same people in this community. And to see us both at a young age be elected, it just felt so special. And, you know, we're, we're gonna miss you. So thank you for your service and wish you the best.
Thank you both so much.
You'll still be here for a month.
Yeah. Thank you both.
All right, well, with that, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.